Welcome to the special meeting, January 11th, 2016, special meeting of the Bothell City Council. Please join me in the Pledge Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Looks like all council members are here. We have, well, it doesn't stay on our agenda, but we did say we would take public comment at the beginning of the meeting. So, does anybody have any issues with the agenda tonight? Any changes?
I have a quick question.
Councilmember Freed.
Freed. Great. Yeah, I have a question. Last year, you recused yourself from this very issue. Just curious what has changed in your mind since recusing yourself? And would you like to explain to the public what that is?
Sure. Last year, I recused myself from this discussion because it was made apparent to me in, by the city man, city attorney, that I shouldn't be involved because I made a statement on, during my campaign, in support of the Growth Management Hearing Board's decision. I have since then found out that the, the piece of our protocol manual that is in place, that is intended for people to recuse themselves based on making a public comment in opposite of the standing opinion of the council, it really was misapplied to my circumstance. So, I don't think it's appropriate for, and I tried to in our protocol manual changes, change that piece of it, because I don't think it's appropriate for anybody to be muzzled essentially by our protocol manual, especially during a campaign. So, that's why I recused myself.
Thanks.
So, so no changes to the agenda, so we'll move into comments from the public. And the first speaker is, oh, just real quick. Last meeting, we had one, one person get questioned by a council member while they're up at the podium. And so, I do ask that all council members please ask the question to me prior to asking a question of somebody that's providing public comment. I think it's, it's uncomfortable for people that, to just get up and give us public comment, but I think it's even worse when a council member cross-examines them and questions their motives or their, their feelings other than what their public comment is. So, I do ask the council members if they do want to ask a speaker a question, please, please have that question be passed through me. The other thing as well is I want people to understand that we do want you to keep your testimony to three minutes. These little lights will go off. When it turns yellow, you have 30 seconds. And when it turns red, your three minutes is up. We need to adhere to that so that we can move on to the city business part of the meeting and, and try to make this respectful of everybody's time here tonight and using only the three minutes that we have allocated each person. So, with that, I'm going to ask for Suzanne Burnell.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. As, my name is Suzanne Burnell. I have two comments on our agenda topic tonight. The first regards the city council meeting from last week. Councilmember Freed insinuated that those of you recently elected or re-elected were representing special interests. I find this statement by Joshua Freed highly ironic and very hypocritical. I want to remind the newly-elected council members and re-elected council members that each one of you won your city council positions by a large majority because the citizens of Bothell were sick and tired of the special developer and development interests of the former city council, which was led by Joshua Freed. Whether it's been the Wayne Golf Course, the Parks Levy that wasn't, or this most recent appeal in which the city of Bothell is actually arguing that they don't need to follow state environmental laws when they craft city laws, Bothell citizens are fed up with developers' special interests dominating city decisions. So, I would urge the city council to remember, the results of this recent election confirm that you have been given a strong mandate and a clear message from the majority of Bothell citizens. We are looking to you to balance growth and environmental protection and leadership. And my second comment actually revolves around the cost of this appeal. As of September 2015, Joe Beck, the city's attorney, reported that legal costs for outside council were around $60,000, $69,000. That was in September 2015. It's January 2016. There's a 36-page document that needs, brief that needs to be written, another 14-page one that possibly needs to be written. The former city council authorized an open checkbook till the end of January. So, right now, the only clear winner in this appeals process is Peter Eglick, the city of Bothell's outside council. And while he may be laughing all the way to the bank, I can tell you when the dust settles and the city attorney and the city manager actually stop making vague summaries about legal costs and actually come up with some real numbers, that Bothell city taxpayers are not going to be happy. They will be angry. So, in closing, I'd ask you to please remember that you have been given the mandate for environmental leadership and protection from the majority of the Bothell, citizens of Bothell. And I'd ask you to stop the appeal and please stop wasting city money. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, just clarification. You said, so each speaker that comes up tonight, no council member up here can ask them direct questions. Is that a standing rule going forward?
The, I'd like to try it because I don't like it that people have taken the opportunity to do two things. One, some people ask questions to give people more time to speak. And we're trying to get through the public comment period and give people even equal amounts of time. The other part of it is that we have had instances where there's a cross-examination where, you know, somebody takes the time to come down here and talk to us, and they get up there and we have a council member just attack them. And I don't think that's right either, and I want that to stop.
And did you think this was an appropriate use of time to attack me rather than having you answer questions of why you've taken political contributions and now involved in this discussion?
So, I'm not going to answer that. But I, but I will tell you, and I will for the audience, we don't, we aren't supposed to use specific council members' names when you're giving your testimony. So, please don't do that because that isn't our protocol manual. You're right. Next person is Chris Asman.
Good evening. I'm, I'm not sure what to put. Perfect. Excellent. So, I am a Bothell citizen. I've lived here almost my entire life. I'm also a science teacher. And I do know how important, you know, clean water and responsible development is for salmon. This area, King County in particular, and, and Bothell are growing rapidly. And people need homes as well. And so, these are obviously competing interests. And all of you are going to be making an important and difficult decision. And I would, I would just encourage you guys to be as well-informed as possible. And I would encourage you to complete the parametrics study. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Asman. Next person is Manny Ocampo.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. First of all, I'd like to correct a mistake I made last week when I spoke before the council. And I realized I neglected to congratulate the council on the election of the new council members as well as the election of the officers of the council. And wish you all the best in the new year. I recognize perhaps better than most, the difficult job that you have and the difficult decision this is. In fact, my admiration for the council has grown over my 30-plus years of, of public service. I know that the council is discussing one aspect in tonight's agenda. It's not a decision regarding which way the zoning is going to go in this area. It is a decision related to the appeal. And I didn't read the agenda bill, so whether or not the study is also on your, your agenda tonight, I'm not sure. But I wanted to just address one aspect of this issue. A decision to continue the appeal and the study is not a win or a loss for either side. Developer, environmentalist, growth, no-growth, property owner, special interest, et cetera. Although those distinctions, I believe, do a disservice to this issue. It simply, continue the appeal, continuing the, to the study, to its conclusion simply provides the opportunity to base this very difficult decision on the latest, the most timely, and best information, data, and science that you can. And I know that the council has received a lot of input, both within the council's resources as well as outside resources regarding data. And I understand that sometimes data can just flood you. And some of what you heard last week and what you're going to hear tonight is the human aspect of data as well. And that, and, and that is going, adds to the difficulty of your decision. I just wanted to point out that no council member needs to feel that a decision to extend the appeal and the study, which is my recommendation, is in any way not in keeping with promises that you've made or positions that you've taken regarding your commitment to the betterment of Bothell in, in every aspect. Housing, environmental concerns, and the quality of life in Bothell, which encompasses all of those. So, I want to encourage the council to see this as an opportunity to base your decision and to fulfill your basic responsibility to act on behalf of all of the city, the citizens of Bothell and all of its interests. Good luck to you. And I'd be glad to answer any question that should get you direct, directly to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Bob, Bob Carzred. Is it Carzred or Carzrued?
Carzrued.
Carzrued.
Norvich, your name. And again, my congratulations to the newly-elected or re-elected council members. When former Attorney General Rob McKenna signed on to the lawsuit challenging Obamacare, I was quite frankly puzzled. My thought was, I don't care if you support Obamacare or oppose Obamacare, how could you not want to have the Supreme Court weigh in on whether or not it's constitutional? If you're a supporter of Obamacare and the Supreme Court says it's constitutional, great, you've got that extra support. I, I see a similar issue with the appeal of the Growth Management Board decision. The Seattle Times article included the comment that the significance of the ruling was that the Growth Management Board extended protections of critical areas to the surrounding ecosystem. I don't know that the Growth Management Board had the authority to do that, and I think that's what this suit is about. Even if the city wins the, the suit, wins the appeal, that does not prohibit the council from moving forward and revising the zoning for the area to, to be more environmentally friendly. But I think you ought to yourselves and to the citizens of Bothell to get an answer to the question of whether or not the Growth Management Board had the authority to make the ruling that they did. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Roz Gork.
Hi there. My name is Roz, and it's nice to see you all again. The tone that this new council sets is very important. The people who live in the Fitzgerald area have been put through a great deal, and they deserve a hearing on this issue. I don't personally live in the Fitzgerald part of Bothell, but as I listened to their comments last Tuesday night, I couldn't help but think that if this can happen to them, this can happen to me too. So, we are all Fitzgerald homeowners tonight. There is no reason to ram this through with a four-three vote with less than a week notice to the public. The appellate Ms. Agard is so confident this council majority is in the tank for her that she copied her attorneys who are against the city in this case in her email giving marching orders to you all. Show that you're independent and thoughtful, and that your years of objecting to things moving too quickly was based on principle. The issue isn't best available science or what's good for the environment, but it's whether a city can determine its own fate in growth. So, there is no reason the council cannot allow the case to be heard in February. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Judy Moritz.
My name is Judy Moritz. I live in Bothell. Citizens of Bothell have overwhelmingly elected you to take, make the right decisions for the good of the entire city. Most of us moved because we love, into Bothell because we love the beauty, the trees, the streams, the forests, the wild animals walking by. For too long, the development and zoning decisions have been made by the majority on the council that were developers, lawyers for developers, or pro-build-build folks influenced by the current city manager. The result has been development after development where every tree is torn down, the land is vastly reconfigured, the streams are disturbed, the slopes are left unstable, and we have ugly retention ponds. In comparing the ordinance from 2008 to 2014, that's number 2163, I was struck by how over and over the word "requires" was eliminated and words such as "encourage to" or "minimize" were substituted. Not only was the forest cover requirement reduced by 20%, 10% in each zone, but the definition of the forest coverage was changed to include pasture land and suburban landscapes and could eliminate, include eliminating mature trees altogether. Clearcutting. This at a time when we need to be concerned about global warming. We've had multiple slides on our own hill where groundwater sources and soil permeability were not fully studied. Severed sewer lines have remained unfixed for several years. And now, it's looking like the current homeowners uphill from the break are going to have to pave at least part of it to get fixed. Zoning ordinances are critical for protecting all of us. The right thing to do is to zone the Fitzgerald 35th Avenue's southeast suburb area using best available science studies, not summaries of past studies. We should determine the best and safest development for each section. Our cert attorney is trying to scare you by saying that the decision has taken away the council's legislative authority, but acknowledges at the same time that this should he had, should have the best available science in the first place. So, why fight the order now? I consulted an environmental attorney not involved in this case, and after reading the Growth Management Hearing Board's final decision, she said, "There's nothing in the board's resolve that prevents the city council from making zoning and planning decisions in the future." It says that you need to follow environmental protections that are reasonable for protecting the area. I urge you to drop the appeal process. It was, as it was, go on with multiple briefs, responses, responses to briefs, court dates, et cetera. And since you have not limited the amount you, that can be spent, it could cost the city and its citizens dearly. What if the city loses, as it is a rather thin case? Where does it end? You have two groups fighting each other over environmental protections that need to be fixed for safety and clarity for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Teri Clem.
Good evening. I'd like to extend my thanks to Andy, Tom, Trish, and James for your willingness to take the time to come out to our properties, sit down at our table, and have a meaningful discussion of the issues, and then tampering, tromping around in the woods for a while. This is much appreciated, as it always reveals a new perspective when one makes the transition from paper, such as reports, maps, and presentations, to actually getting out on the land. As I stated at the last council meeting, both the parametrics study and the appeal need to be approved and moved forward. The homeowners in the city would not be arguing these actions with the council if we didn't believe decisively that there is new and more relevant base, best available science. And there is reason to believe that an injustice was done to property owners when the Growth Management Hearing Board ruled against implementing only a slightly modified version of the original, more onerous and repressive LID that has driven developers away time and time again. I want to address the issue of water in Zone 1, and in particular groundwater. Much has been said about the effects of water flowing into North Creek. The quality, quantity, and the temperature all play an important role. That is a proven fact. However, it is not a fact that water from Zone 1 plays any significant role in North Creek with respect to those three characteristics. Unfortunately, it has been insinuated in public comments to the Bothell City Council that Zone 1 may be a candidate for unacceptable water quality, quantity, or temperature, contributing negatively to the very survival of salmon in North Creek. Let's look closer at groundwater flow and start with a couple of assumptions. If there is no significant groundwater, then there's nothing to heat up. If there's nothing to warm up, then the issue of salmon survival cannot be affected and becomes a moot point. What could give more definite, definitive, and unarguable proof of the existence or nonexistence of groundwater than multiple pit tests? Last April 24th, springtime, mind you, before the summer drought hit, nine pits were dug representing soil conditions and groundwater flow on multiple properties spread out over approximately 15 acres. Following are the results of those tests. All had perfect soil conditions for excellent drainage and infiltration. But here's the most interesting and relevant finding, and I quote from each pit site. I don't have time here, it looks like, to go through each one, but here's test pit number one. No evidence of groundwater whatsoever. Number two, 16 feet, no groundwater encountered. They go on through all nine test pits, and the most they could come up with was some seepage at some level. So, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I would again ask you to vote to allow both the parametrics study and the appeal to go forward. It's time to right a wrong.
Thank you. Next is Lee Henderson.
Hey, Andy, can I make a request that my wife, Kim Merritt, be put on the list? And we didn't have a form, but if she could be put sooner than later so she could take our grandson home?
Can, Lee, would you be okay? Okay. Ms. Merritt, please?
I'm Kim Merritt, and as you see, I'm Georgia's wife. I haven't been involved in this as long as everybody else. I've just lived there since 97. But to say that we are against the environment and want development is completely wrong. You know, when we found out in 2003 that the connector was going to go through our road, I was devastated. We, we thought we would live the rest of our lives on that hill, but there's been development all around us, and things have changed like they have to everybody else. And we want nothing more than to, we deserve our day in court, and we would like to move on with our lives. While I wasn't able to attend the meeting last week, I did watch the broadcast. And what really dumbfounded me was that the council was trying so hard to get this pushed through for this week, when the city attorney told everybody that the council that you had hired, that you had already paid a lot of money to, could not be here. And I just, I could not understand why. I was just perplexed that after being told all the information that you chose to ignore it and push ahead with this as well. Then after reading the letter to the editor last week, it, it kind of cleared it up a little bit. And I just feel that when the two new council members and the new mayor all have received contributions from the people that are suing the city, it, it just made me think. And not that any other, not that it made a big difference, but with the fact of you trying to push this through, it really did feel suspect. And it seemed very fishy to me. And I just feel that, as everybody has always said about the old council, if you indeed say that this is a new council, then I don't see what the harm is in waiting a week and listening to the advice of the attorney that you hired that especially, his, his speciality is in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Henderson.
Well, hello. I'm Lee Henderson. I am a citizen here. I am a business owner here, and I know very little about this subject. I've only been told about this subject in the last couple of days, and I think that's who I'm speaking for today, because it's too fast. I have watched councils get on in Bothell for 25 years, and I have never seen a council member be able to make a decision of this magnitude in this short of time. I think the people of Bothell should know what it is you're making this decision on and why you're making the decision, not just because you can. So, please listen to the people like me who don't know very much about this subject and would like to know more so that we can tell our neighbors and we can actually, you know, support whatever decision you do make, not just because you can, but because you do it for the good of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Karen Clem.
Hi, I'm Karen Clem, and I live in Zone 1, lived there for 33 years. And since moving there, there's been all the uncertainty over all the 33 years, from roads, zoning, restrictions being incorporated into the city. But I really want to thank those council members who came out, Trish, Tom, James, and Andy. You walked the property, you talked to us, you sat at the table, I wasn't there for one of the visits, but, and listened to us. And I felt like you really listened to us, and I'm hoping that you took all of that information and you can help that in your decision. And I wish, Davina, you could have been able to be there. I know that you had commitments, and we tried to get you there, and you were sick. So, I hopefully, you've done enough research, because like was said before, I have no idea how you can even comprehend what is going on here on such short notice. I mean, I just, I just don't know. We can't even get it unless somebody can provide a timeline for all of the events that happened since we moved here, you know, because we get it confused. So, I don't, I just don't know how that can be done. All I'm asking is that you really are open to listening to people, and that I felt that way. And, and I hope that you have not made, didn't make up your mind prior, that you're open to all these comments, because that's what the city is. That's your job. And we have, we have a right to be heard. And I felt like you heard, heard us. So, we have the rest of us out here that have things to share. And I think most of my neighbors are here tonight wanting to know this. So, you have a face to put to all of these comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eric Admin.
Hi there. My name is Eric Admin, and I represent a group called the Snow King Watershed Council, which is a nonprofit working to protect streams in our local area, including North Creek. North Creek is a vital local stream, which fortunately for us remains in better shape than most. You can still see salmon returning to North Creek. Almost all of our local streams are pretty much in terrible shape due to urbanization, development, and stormwater runoff, which until recently was relatively unregulated. So, if you go to Swamp Creek, for instance, just down in Kenmore, you really won't see any salmon returning there. Most of the streams lack the protections needed to help retain some degree of water quality and to support salmon runs. On North Creek in particular, the North Creek Fish and Wildlife Critical Habitat Protection Area was established after careful scientific study. And the Growth Management Hearing Board upheld the set of regulations in place. So, right now, you have what a lot of areas are striving to implement and have a difficult time implementing, which is adequate protections for an important area for salmon habitat and recovery. So, I'd recommend that if you do make any changes -- So I'd recommend that if you do make any changes, that they be well advised by current science in addition to development considerations.
Thank you, Mr. Admin. Next person is David Bain.
I'm a Bothell resident and like to respond to some of the comments that have been made. One is there's a difference between keeping a campaign, or keeping a campaign promise and doing something to enrich yourself. And also to critics of the former council, I'd say there's a difference between the appearance of impropriety and actual impropriety. Sometimes the right decision for the city at the time may benefit members on the council, and ideally every decision you make will benefit everyone in the city. Another, let's see, I'd like you to drop the appeal and take a lesson from the city's decision on Horse Creek. The city proposed a design for 522 that violated state law, and once the city was informed of that, they said, no, we're going to design 522 the way we want, and we're going to go ahead with it. And we've spent a lot of money designing it, and the state said, no, you can't do that. And as a result, the city spent a lot of money on an illegal design, and it delayed completion of 522 by two years. There are advantages to saying, you know, we've gone in the wrong direction, it's time to start over, we're going to get it right this time. Another comment I've heard is that we've already put so much money into the appeal, we might as well finish it. On the other hand, I personally have helped the city raise over $5 million for the recovery of North Creek salmon, and I think that we don't want to proceed with other activities in the city that offset that investment. So I guess basically what I'd like to encourage you to do is put the legal mess behind us. You know, if we can have a negotiated settlement that addresses the concerns the city attorney raised last time, that would be wonderful, but let's stop spending money on this. Let's start a new clock to try to get things right and find something that works both for the residents in the area and for the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is, it looks like Mark Tyler. There we go, okay.
His, his.
Okay, no problem.
He piggybacked. I'm Mark Tyler. I do live in Zone 1, in the Fitzgerald area. I don't have anything prepared. I wasn't planning on speaking. I'll keep it short, so I don't say anything that I shouldn't. I've been in that, that house for 24 years. I am extremely frustrated by this whole scenario that's gone on for, since the day I moved in. And I would just love it if the council would all get together, and even as the previous gentleman said, come up with a decision. Let's stop screwing around with this and get it done. Stop keeping us handcuffed through this whole thing. So I definitely would say yes to the appeal and to the study. Let's get some science behind the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person is Brian Pearson.
Is this overhead working today? All right. I, hi, I'm Brian Pearson. I live in Zone 1, the green block on the, on the picture there. Thank you also to those of you who took the time to come out and visit our properties, and as one of your colleagues pointed out correctly last week at the January 5th meeting, the overwhelming majority of folks that spoke represent the land in the corner up here. You know, we're not right in the heart of this valley or anything. We represent the corner, the northeast corner of Zone 1, and we overwhelmingly favor completing the appeal. That is 85% done, I believe is the official count from the city attorney, and completing the best available science study by Parametrics. We appreciate the importance of balancing sustainable development with the environment. We understand the need to retain the heavy restrictions in the LID overlay for the rest of Zone 1 west of 39th. 39th is right there where my pen is setting. These are lower lying lands, and as you can see too, from the arrows on the screen, those are the arrows between the nearest property boundary in North Creek. This is called the North Creek blah, blah, blah area. So that's the distance, and you see our distance in line number one. There's a map program that the city uses that measures that, is .6 miles. The other lines for those areas west of 405 or west of the creek itself are half as close, so they're .3 or .1 or .2 miles from the creek, and many of them are also in lower lying areas, not up in the hillside. So if you came out and saw, as many of you did, this is dry, environmentally sound, it's been discussed before in terms of the filtration in the soil and all of that. So we are looking, we are looking for a reasonable and sustainable solution. There's widespread acknowledgement that the current situation is not working after all these years. We believe it would be wholly consistent with the existing approved zoning in the area and the physical evidence to remove the LID overlay from our block of land. Keep it for the areas that are in that critical low line, close to the creek, but if you look north and south of us, and all those highlighted zoning, none of those have LID. And look at their proximity to the creek. So we're asking that you remove the LID, keep everything else the same, and there's a solution that would save us all a lot of time and effort. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person is Dr. Bernhardt.
My rating is no better.
Same as last time.
I'm Craig Bernhardt, and what I thought was interesting, when we started the meeting, we all said to pledge allegiance. Liberty and justice for all. Our legal system is set up with a process of appeals for, if there's something that people don't feel is right. There is no justice if this appeal isn't finished, because what happened is the council made a decision, as you all know, and the environmental side appealed it. Well, if we don't answer the appeal, there is no justice, because the higher court has not determined who's right. And I'm not saying which side is right, although I have an opinion, but I am saying there's got to be justice, and the only way there can be justice is let the court make the decision. Now, again, the environmentalists have had their right to appeal, and by dragging their feet, this was supposed to be an expedited process. They dragged their feet until they got a favorable counsel to influence the vote, and they're not trying, they're running up costs, they're not doing anything that's creating justice, they're obstructive. So I, in conclusion, I urge the council to continue the appeal so that we can have some justice. Let the court decide who's right. The majority of the money has been spent. Then people will be treated fairly. Thank you.
That is the end of my sign up sheets. Is anybody in the audience wishing to address the council? A gentleman in the back there.
I've lived in Bothell for an awful long time. I could stand up here and try my best to convince this council to continue the appeal. And as soon as I turned around and walked back to my seat, you'd probably forget everything I said. So what I want you to remember is the one person that has explained everything to this council, he is a person that you are paying to give his advice, and that's our city attorney. In the last meeting, he explained things to you extremely well, point by point. And if you're going to listen to anybody, you should listen to your city attorney and the way he explained it at the last meeting.
So I got a whole stack of additional people that'd like to comment, so if you haven't filled one of these out, do we have more in the back? We're all out. Okay. So I'll go through these, and then we'll go back to the audience again. If that should be work. Donian Noble? Okay. Ms. Noble.
Hi, my name is Donnie Anne Noble, but that's okay. I have lived in the city of Bothell for 23 years, and I have been friends with the Berry family for over a decade, and I have come to see the anguish that this issue has caused this family firsthand. Please do not let the other side let you believe that you are making a decision about the environment tonight. This is not an environmental decision. This is an issue of politics. The other side, many of whom do not reside within the city of Bothell and essentially amount to an environmental special interest group, have cost the city thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, of dollars in legal fees, and they are asking the city to set a dangerous precedent to allow a group other than the city council to decide how land is used. It is the job of the city council to legislate, your job to legislate, and zone Bothell land, not the Growth Management Boards. Your city attorney advised you last week that if the council decides not to move forward with the appeal, the city will have a very difficult time fulfilling their duty to legislate in this manner. At this point, the outcome of the appeal and the results of the study are yet to be determined. We are only asking that you let the legislative analysis continue. This is an issue of politics. As politicians, your job is to represent your constituents, not an outside special interest group. Your constituents are sitting right here in front of you tonight. They are Bothell residents, they are the landowners, retirees, small business owners, neighbors, and voters. They ask their representatives to continue to move forward with the appeal of the Growth Management Board's decision, and to allow the well-respected firm of Parametrics to continue their study. Both these actions are ones the council already decided were the right ones, that supported, that are supported by city staff, including the city attorney. Please don't let a special interest group veer you off track. Choose to represent the residents of Bothell and let the appeal and study move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person is Margot Evans.
I also live in Zone 1 of Bothell, and I, I said quite a bit last week, and I would just like to reiterate a lot of what has been said by Zone 1 people. We do appreciate the city council members that came out and listened to us, and hopefully we were heard. As I said last week, I think it's important to realize that the Fitzgerald sub area that we're talking about is around 435 acres, and Zone 1 that we keep talking about is about 40 acres of that, or 1/10th. 9/10ths is left in the rest of the Fitzgerald sub area. Though we are a relatively small neighborhood, there's about 12 of us that have lived there between 20 and 40 years. We're passionate about our areas, many of you are about the areas that you live in. I think it's important to note that we are all citizens of Bothell. Our taxes go to help pay for different areas within the city that may not be directly affected, that may not directly affect us, but we are in this together to do what's best for our areas. I would like to request that the city council listen to the advice of the attorney and the professional city staff regarding moving forward with, with the appeal process. They are best informed and are strongly recommending that this study and the appeal need to be completed. Successful approval will give the council and staff authority to make the best decisions for our area. I made a comment at, at the end of what I said last time about seven city council people all from King County, and I want you to know that I, I didn't say that to suggest that you wouldn't be listening to Snohomish County residents. I know that one person in particular ran on the fact that they would have an ear towards this Snohomish County people, and I feel all of you will. I truly don't think that we are a divided city. I feel that we will each give, that you will each give fair consider, consideration to this matter, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Next is TJ Berry.
I've been a Bothell resident for 42 years, basically my whole life. Up until a couple of years ago, I was a normal person. I grew up in Zone 1 of the Fitzgerald suburb. I, I became a very active person in the Bothell area and member of the community. I was a coach at Bothell High. I played music in the Fourth of July Parade in the Bothell Irish Fair many times. I was even in the band of my friend Blake Lewis, who put Bothell on the map when he got second place in American Idol. Then a few years ago, I got this horrible disease. It's a disease so rare, they don't have a name for it. It's, it's one of the rarest diseases in the human race. To put it in perspective, I would rather have cancer. I lost everything, my wife, stepchild, job, my ability to drive a car or play music, cook or take care of myself. A year ago, I had to move back in with my parents in Zone 1, so they could take care of me. I'm 42. My parents, my sister's family, and all my friends taking wonderful care of me. I'm telling you all this because I want you to know what I'm going through, one of your constituents who's lived here a very long time. I'm in favor of continuing with the appeal, and I want to make sure you know the face of the person, and if you, oh, if you vote to stop the appeal, I want you to know the face of the person that you are totally screwing over. Thank you.
Next is Tom Berry.
I'm Tom Berry, and first off, I want to thank you for your heartfelt wishes last week. I really appreciate that. I was in the hospital, couldn't be at the last hearing, so I did the YouTube thing when I got out repeatedly, again and again. I wanted to make sure that I knew exactly what was going on. I was amazed by the sense of urgency. It's, it's, it's an emergency. We have to be here suddenly. This is very strange. I'm not sure that it passes the smell test. So instead of reading all these notes that people have spoken about so eloquently tonight, just let me say that the Berry family came to Bothell in 71. We were the Canyon Park Orchard for 20 years. We worked blood, sweat, and tears, literally, into our land. We worked blood, sweat, and tears, literally, into our land. And after all that, and being able to pay off and own the place free and clear, we're in financial trouble now. It's the 19th year of our attempt to get something done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person is Suzanne Berry.
I can't.
You want to pass? Okay. Next person is Katie Green.
I'm a lifelong Bothell resident, and I'm here to support the property owners in Zone 1. And I ask that you complete the Parametrics study and allow the appeal to go forward. I've known the Berry family for half my life, more than that. And I'm actually here to read a letter from Joelle, who can't be here tonight. I regret that I'm not able to be here this evening to show my continuing support for my parents and their neighbors in Zone 1 of the Fitzgerald sub area. Simply put, most people don't understand this issue fully. Some people don't want to because it's so complex. Some people simply don't believe the details of the endless saga when it's explained to them. It's so easy to see environmental issues as black and white, but in this instance, it's within the gray that the truth actually resides. I'm thrilled that we live in a city where people are so passionate about the environment. I'm truly grateful to those who have devoted so much time and energy to keeping our city beautiful and a little bit wild. Since my father's first request for a rezone hearing in 1997, the citizens of Zone 1 continue to be surrounded by ongoing building. It seems to me that these landowners are expected to bear the environmental burden of an entire city that they've been given the highest residential taxable zoning by the city council, which is not what they wanted or ever asked for, and saddled with the strictest experimental LID. Please see the appeal through. Please recognize Zone 1 as separate from the rest of the Fitzgerald sub area, critical species habitat where the Three Creek fishery actually is, and grant the properties of Zone 1 the slight changes to the LID that they have requested so that responsible and sustainable building can take place, development that would still be executed under some of the strictest environmental regulations in the state of Washington, as far as I understand. If the outcome of this 19-year struggle is the best we can expect, my parents will realize a substantially lesser portion of what the fair market value of the property actually is. Who else is forced to face that with their property? Who else is expected to endure that? I'd also like to add too, and this is for me, I've heard a lot of talk about the financial ramifications of ongoing studies, and I think I really want to highlight and put into perspective the financial ramifications that are happening to the residents of Zone 1 and the impact it's having on their health and their potential retirement plans.
Next person is Kai Nelson.
So we hear a lot about bullying in schools. Most in this room have been bullied at some point in their lives. I can't help but feel like I'm being bullied and that we're all being bullied in emergency special meeting. Why the rush? What's going on? I feel that there are people in this audience tonight who are trying to bully the city and council and staff, and they are hurting our city by attempting to take away the council's right and duty to govern. Merriam-Webster's definition of govern: to officially control and lead, to make decisions about laws, taxes, social programs, et cetera, for a city, state, country, to control the way something is done, to control or guide the actions. If you do not allow this appeal to go through, you're giving up your control. You should all want to win this appeal. Not seeing this appeal through, which the city attorney said in last week's meeting that he feels very confident the city will win, will hurt all of us, as this is precedent-setting and could impact all of us in the city and potentially other cities across the state. So why does it seem like some of the members in the council are afraid of hearing the truth? Both in the completion of the best available science Parametrics study and letting the appeal come to a decision and to completion? Why in the world would we not wait for the lawyer in whom the city has already invested almost $100,000, is what I heard, to defend our city to return from his vacation? And is my understanding that the work is almost complete? The city council will retain all of their power if they win the appeal? I wasn't going to say this, but I actually am going to. I heard some council members last week say that they don't want to spend more money on this appeal. I would ask that you talk with the appellant and ask them to stop the pattern of suing the city, which is costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars to defend our city. Just doesn't make sense. It is scary to me that the council members who are making very big decisions don't know what they don't know, especially the newest members. And this is not a negative statement against anyone on the council. It is not, but it's a reality. Each person has a different expertise, but none of you are lawyers, city planners, work at companies like Parametrics. This is a complex topic with a long history with tons of data. Please, use your own mind. Use your own research and reading. Listen to your staff. Listen to your city attorney, and please listen to the attorney who the city has hired, who specializes in this type of work. I'm just really hopeful that this new council will be willing and able to do something, be willing to listen openly, have compassion and empathy, and be brave enough to make your own non-biased decisions.
So that's the end of the sign-up sheets that I have. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Andrea Perry?
Mayor and council members, once again, I'm here urging you tonight to drop the appeal by the city against the Growth Management Hearing Board. There is no justifiable reason to continue this effort, to overturn the board's ruling on such a flawed ordinance, especially given the fact that your own legal counsel, the city attorney, told you last week that you should have indeed considered best available science when you were in the process of amending the original ordinance, 1988, back in 2014. And that is exactly what the board pointed out in their decision when they invalidated Ordinance 2163. If you continue the appeal, you absolutely run the risk of additional appeals to higher courts, and that's by both sides, not just one, but by both. This will wind up as an even longer, more expensive burden than it already has been. I want to remind the newly elected and re-elected council members that you all ran on a promise to be environmental stewards for the citizens of your city, and you made a commitment to facilitate smart growth that protects the environment. I also want to remind you that during the candidate's forum last September, all three of you took the position that you wanted to see the appeal effort ended, and guess what? Your community heard you, and all three of you were elected by landslide victories. In July, council members, and I can't say your names, but you know who you are, spoke and voted against the appeal, to appeal the board's decision. As far as new information, nothing has changed since then, other than the first time ever, at least publicly, the city attorney is now telling you that the reason to continue the appeal has less to do with whether this is a valid ordinance or not, and more to do with if you somehow win the appeal. And I think that's a real long shot, I have to tell you. I do not think you would win this appeal. But you will somehow be able to ensure your ability to legislate any way you want without constraints, but you are already constrained and required to legislate within the law. And because you did not do so when you passed the ordinance, the board ruled against the city. That's the truth of it, and that's a good thing. I would ask you, why are you just hearing this particular rationale from the city attorney for the first time? I believe it's a hail mary attempt to scare you into continuing with an appeal that benefits no one, except perhaps your contracted attorney, who continues to rack up the hours and the billing. Please stop the appeal, remember what you promised to the community, and that they have put their trust in your word, and start working on an ordinance right now that both protects the environment and allows pursuitable smart development in the Fitzgerald sub area. And I'll add one last thing, that if 2163 is upheld, that immediately goes on the books, that's the law, and developments will vest to that law, and that is a terrible ordinance. It's not based on best available science. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to? Okay, go ahead, sir. Go up to the dais. Please give us your name on the record.
George Merritt.
Or when you get the microphone, please.
George Merritt. I live in Zone 1, in the property that we're talking about. I think everything has pretty well been said. I really wasn't going to say anything until the last speaker. You know, you talked about being influenced by, you know, the city council being elected by the citizens of Bothell. Here is a special interest that she doesn't live in the city, that just spoke. I mean, if there was ever a conflict of interest, and you're being pressurized by legal appellant, and if any of you fall to what she's saying, I think it's disrespectful to all the citizens of Bothell. You guys hire a legal counselor to represent you, not some outside influential group that has got their own agenda. I just, if you do not go ahead with appeal, as a citizen of Bothell, I just wouldn't be able to believe it, and you'd be able to, you know, look us in the face. So anyway, I certainly hope you do the right thing and go ahead with this appeal and not be influenced by outside special interests. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? City clerk, do you need them to give their full name when they get up to the microphone? Okay. Please give your full name at the microphone.
My name is Anthony Powder. I live in the Fitzgerald sub area, not in Zone 1 though. However, I live a little bit lower than Zone 1. You know, one thing is I really want to thank the council, and the outgoing council as well, that laughed I didn't get a chance to do that. Obviously, in a downturn, in a down economy, having a pro-development council helps move things forward, and I think they've done a very good job bringing growth. And at that time, that's what we needed. A big shift has changed in Bothell. The economy's starting to go now. A lot of buildings are being built, and I think we've made a right shift to a little bit more of a conservationist side on the council, and I think that's a real important shift in Bothell. Couple comments for tonight, you know, test pits last spring, you know, last spring was very dry. We had test pits dug for my neighbor's area. We have a development going in that I've talked about before at the council a couple of years ago. They dug down about 14 feet. It was dry in my neighborhood, and if it's dry in my neighborhood, it's going to be dry everywhere else. So it's just something to look at and say, hey, look, here it is. I can really feel the pain of the sub area and having the issues, you know, the 39th connector was a bad thing, and it really did put shackles on the people on 39th. Now we've moved those shackles down to some of the owners on 35th because of the widening of the road, taking up their land as well. So we're not necessarily removing the shackles from people, we're moving the shackles over. So it's just something to remember as well. There's got to be some middle ground somewhere. I learned that with my development issue when I was going through it. There's got to be middle ground where we have, there's got to be a given shove. So where I'm wondering is, how can we maybe move forward with the appeal while still holding back on the development so we are not able to strike that in, to make sure we get that best available science, have that discussion, and make sure we're doing the right thing for the area? Because that 5,400 zoning, I live right next to 5,400 zoning that's not LID, and it's a very tight zoning. There's a lot of houses per little area there, and I think it's really worth saying, hey, do we need to look at that density and possibly change that density before that development takes place and before that's locked in? The last bit is, you know, it's really a tough decision, and I don't envy what you guys have to do. I really appreciate what you guys do. You help drive the city in the right direction. There's points on both sides, but the last thing was, it's really good on the council to have a mix of people, whether it's business owners, whether it's people who work for the city. And I think that's a real important thing to remember is, you know, it's very tough sometimes, and somebody made a good comment up here about the, you know, sometimes it's not always a kind of a conflict of interest, but it can very much appear to be a conflict of interest, and I think that happened on both sides, both sides of things, you know, with people making points to say, hey, that's where it is. You know, if I have opinion and I give somebody's money to somebody's campaign, that's that opinion, but also on the other side of things too, it needs to be watched, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powder. Anybody else? Oh, there we go. Annie found a yellow slip.
Sorry. My name is Bill Moritz. I'm resident 43 years of Bothell. Last week, a member of the council and several property owners claimed that they couldn't sell their property. But have they tried? Have others in the Fitzgerald sub area tried and been able to sell their property? Well, we did a little research. I could have the overhead. In the immediate area, and I don't expect to be able to read this, but I've got a better way to look at it in just a second, we found 18 properties that sold between 2010 and 2015, and they have various sizes, and they're scattered around. I think a better way to look at it is this. There are a couple of properties directly in this, what they keep calling Zone 1. I've never seen it in any other document, but I guess that's what it's called. But there are properties all over around here, and we eliminated just single-family houses, small lots. We're not talking about the stuff that might have gone on up in this area up here. So the question is, well, the answer to that question is yes, and what they need to do is put a for-sale sign up and see what the market will do. And I was out there the other day, and I didn't see any for-sale signs. The market works when a willing seller and a willing buyer come to an agreement. The city has no obligation whatsoever to see that any of us gets the maximum dollars theoretically possible from our land. If the land was indeed purchased as an investment, then like any other investment, returns are not guaranteed. Your job as a council is to look out for the best interests of all residents and to protect the environment, which is a big reason why people move here. But I have one more point. That same council member, I can't refer to, challenged the newly elected council members last week that they might be receiving direct political contributions from appellants, and they're somehow would be inappropriate. Then a letter magically appeared in the Bothell reporter from a person who claimed to be in Bothell, but her voter registration's actually in Kenmore, that somehow you would have to be recusing yourself. Well, as that unnamed council member knows very well, anyone is free to donate to any candidate they choose for any reason. And yes, people associated with this successful challenge to the city's ordinance did donate to members of the council in the election. But here's some numbers to put this in perspective. On the left, the total dollars of cash donations that were received, the number of Bothell residents, and the percentage of those dollars that they received from Bothell residents is shown, as well as some information from the master builders and the realtors donated very heavily to the side that lost. And I'll just close by saying that if you just look at this, the overwhelming number of Bothell residents who supported, took out their checksbooks and supported this string of candidates were overwhelmingly elected. I call it a landslide, and I think you need to pay attention to what you said to those people during the campaign. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to give public comment? Is there anybody else that would like to give public comment? Ms. Gwynn.
My name is Sandy Gwynn. I'm a Bothell resident. I've lived in Bothell for over 20 years. Excuse me, kind of recovering from a cold also. There were a couple of comments made, and I want to put it on the record. I gave no one any money for, to run for office, and I believe I haven't over the 20 years, even though I've supported many of you from both sides of the vote through the past years. I'm very frugal with my money. My history is long in the state of Washington. I grew up here. I've seen the changes. My dad was a realtor. My father's log cabin is on the Ellingsburg Fairgrounds, but I've also spent 20 years in Southern California, and I'm seeing what bad development does. When the Fitzgerald residents came asking for a rezone, their property was R1, and they wanted R4. And for the listening public, that's, you could build four houses on an acre versus the one house on an acre that was their current zoning. Because the regulations were new, and for the environment, we also recognized we needed to compensate the landowners. So, the zoning went not from one house per acre to four houses per acre, it went from one house per acre to eight houses per acre. So, there was compensation, and if you do anything with the change in the regulations, you need to keep that in mind. Also, I do hope you stop the appeal and look at this area again and come up with a compromise. It's in there, but don't forget the salmon. I just want to leave the picture, this passed the Littlewitz test. It's the only area in the city that was very critical to the environment, very sensitive, and functioning very well. So, please do stop the appeal and work with the residents. Thank you.
Go ahead, and ask me your question, please. Is it a clarifying question?
It's a clarifying question. When the speaker said that the land area was zoned R8 as a means of compensation, I wanted to know if she meant that that was compensation for the fact that the 39th connector was placed through there? I mean, I guess I don't understand what you mean by compensation.
It was the, it was the one area that had more critical regulations, more protective regulations than other parts of the city.
Okay, good.
Because we did want them to develop.
Mr. Freed, what would you like to ask?
Is the speaker making our calculation of eight per acre based upon also the restrictions of the 50% forest cover, or would that reduce the eight per acre and the wetlands?
So, I don't, Ms. Gwynn, I don't know if you were here when this meeting started, but I'm trying to make it so that council members don't ask speakers' questions, because we've had run into issues in the past. That's why they're looking at me and not you, and trying to decide whether I can allow a question to be answered, but I think that's reasonable. Go ahead.
Do you want to restate our questions, or?
No, I think it's fine. I'm just trying to figure out a balance, how to do this.
I believe, if memory serves me correctly, our staff person, Bruce Blackburn, helped craft the comp plan regulations, development regulations, and he would be the best person to respond to those technical questions.
So, just curious, though, because if you wouldn't mind asking the speaker, she made a statement that there were eight units per acre that were allowed, but the current zoning with the restrictions on it, would she still make that statement that there's eight units per acre that are allowed, given the restrictions on the property?
So, I think the speaker did ask, answer the question. She didn't know.
No, she answered the question. She said that we would have to ask Bruce, but she made the statement that there are eight units per acre, so I'm just curious where that calculation comes from.
So, it's okay, Ms. Gwynn. So, this is what we're trying to avoid in the council meetings, is having people interrogated. So, I don't think you need to answer this question. We can have Mr. Blackburn follow up with Mr. Freed.
But yeah, if statements are made, it's fair to ask the question.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak to the council? Nope? Okay. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, we do have one. Oh, we have two more.
My name is Jim Fries. I've been a resident of Bothell since 1978. I didn't know I was going to speak tonight, so I didn't have a chance to look it up. Perhaps somebody will know the name of this study, but very large study was recently done, maybe four or five months ago, that was published, that showed that supposed economic development is in large part a myth. It's too often achieved by a loss of what's commonly referred to as ecological services. Salmon spawning and rearing habitats, perfect example. These are more and more being able to be quantified, and too often, I think we've intuitively known this for 40, 50 years, at least since the '70s, we know there's some impact on economic economies generated by natural systems. Salmon is the easiest for us to understand, because we live here, there's a salmon industry. And hence, there's this need for environmental regulation. I've got 45 years in the construction industry, I've got a very, very blue boot. I also have one that's green. I've been involved in Friends of North Creek Forest since its inception. What alarmed me about this whole thing around Fitzgerald was what appeared to be a zoning change without the latest and best science attached to it. I've listened tonight and have a lot of compassion for the families who waited for so long, but I was also alarmed. I like to see everybody win whenever possible, and it's painful to see delays when they're not necessary in this case. However, based on what I've just said, I would really appreciate it if the parties could let this appeal get dropped and go back and use the latest science, fold in parametrics, and come up with a solution, work together. I don't know how I could help with that. If I could put energy to it, I would. That's my statement. Thank you.
Thank you. What's your question?
If the speaker could forward the study that he mentioned, maybe to the council, just for our reading pleasure, obviously, it's not something that would be entered into the record, it probably wouldn't bear, or it shouldn't bear necessarily on any decision about this, but I think it would be good information in the future.
All right, great. Mr. Ewing.
Hello, everybody, and thank you for serving our great city. My name's Patrick Ewing. I'm a former city council member, serving for 12 years. Plain and simple, ordinance 2163 was a bad ordinance, and it needs to be fixed. In regards to the environment, it stripped pre-existing protections from a very unique area. This reach of North Creek contains one of the best salmon spawning habitats within our urban area. In regards to transportation, it removed the 39th Avenue connector intended to provide traffic improvements in a rapid-growing area. It was replaced with a more circuitous route along 35th Avenue with much less total traffic capacity for the area, and additional improvements are needed to be made to 35th. In regards to poor planning, it kept the high-density 5400A zoning along the former 39th Avenue right away. 5400A means attached housing, which could allow condos and apartments. The connector has, the connector was the rationale used for this higher density. With the connector removed, the higher density makes no sense in a once again remote area. In your last meeting, the city surprised you with a brand-new argument. Somehow, the city's failure to prevail in this appeal would set a huge precedence that will restrain all Washington cities in their local legislative authority. This has caught you by surprise, and why was this whopper of an argument made not a lot sooner? Why didn't the city provide the council guidance when the city lost its local legislative authority by not making an offer, any offer, on the Wayne Golf Course back nine? Sound legal advice is not being provided to you. If you are fooled once, shame on them. If you are fooled twice, shame on you. I don't think this is a precedent-setting case, because it's very clear that cities must plan according to GMA. If the precedence that is set is that cities must protect critical areas using best available science and cannot be trumped by keeping development churning through an economic downturn, then I think a good precedence was set. I don't think the city will prevail in this appeal. The public will continue to bear its ongoing cost, which has been grossly underestimated, and for what purpose? If the city were to prevail, 2163 would once again become the law of record, and new development proposals would vest under it until the new comp plan and code changes were in place. This will take significant time to do it right. Therefore, the most fair and efficient path forward for you is to drop the appeal now, temporarily readopt the pre-existing comp plan and code to show compliance with the hearing board's order, and immediately commence your work with the community to make the updates that are needed in this area. Amendments, it'll have to be a process that involves hears both sides and comes to that compromise. Thank you for your listening.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Is there anybody else that would like to talk? Oh, there we go. Please come to the mic and say your name.
I'm going to use your fancy camera for the first time, so I haven't done this before, so let's see how it works. I prepared this list of advantages and disadvantages of immediate adoption of ordinance 1985. It's both the 2007 ordinance and the 2008 that I believe you have done by resolution, and so this would be what would be carried forward to the Growth Management Hearing Board. So, this is really a follow-up to what Patrick was talking about, and I just drafted some advantages to the going ahead and dropping, dropping the appeal, meeting the compliance order of January 14th and January 28th, 2015. What are the advantages? It's inexpensive, the best available science has already been approved by the Growth Management Hearing Board. In 2008, this was unanimously supported by the property owners, particularly in this Zone 1. The sub-area policies are okay. They too were approved by the board, and the sub-area policies will support significant changes if they need to be made by subsequent regulation changes. Because the sub-area policies in these two ordinances are strong and have met best available science already, they can be changed simply by adopting an ordinance without going through the comprehensive plan change process. And the other issue that is important is that vesting is immediate. So, once this is adopted, the property owners are free to seek their sale of their property or do as they wish. And then, the other point is this issue of the 39th Southeast connector that you've heard. It is my understanding in the findings of the board that the board dismissed all of our issues that were connected with the 39th Southeast. We did not oppose that. So, it would leave, you may need to make a slight adjustment when the ordinance is actually adopted. So, then, I've got the advantages on the other side and the disadvantages, but I want to go ahead and show you just one additional thing, and that is the schedule from the Growth Management Hearing Board, the compliance schedule. And as you see, the compliance schedule is very proactive. It could mean that you would have, we could support what the council did, and a compliance hearing would take place by the 8th of March. So, this is the fastest, most efficient, fairest way to proceed at this time, to, and not to go through the additional costs for the appeal.
Could you please wrap up your comments?
I will.
Thank you.
So, I will put this up, and one additional statement for you to read. Now, is this going to show on there? Okay, this is taken from the Growth Management Hearing Board decision, page 15, and I want to point out the very last part of this, which says that, "To the extent and purpose that the, of the LID overlay is to protect the complex function of the critical areas, it is clear that the city is required to consider best available science, and with respect to forest cover effectiveness, the city relies on no science, merely conjecture." So, what I would say to you in closing is that this is not limiting your legislative ability. It is supporting what has already been done in 2008. It is not, it is not, you can do creative, good things in this area, and every case before the Growth Management Board stands on its own merits, and no way does one carry over onto the other.
Thank you, Ms. Agard.
Okay.
I believe, Mr. Evans, you would like to come up to the dais? I'm sorry. Come on up, Bill, drain us.
Do I need to submit a copy of this for the record, too?
Yes, you do.
You didn't happen to pick up the map that was here, did you? You didn't happen to pick up the map that was here on the podium? Did somebody pick up our map?
I put it on the podium when I was up there, but I don't have it.
It's not there now.
She had to have laid her stuff.
Okay, well, I don't know if I'm the un-
Bill, I'm sorry. I did.
That's a first statement. But that's not a true statement, so. Thank you. Boy, I don't know where to begin. Well, I guess first to begin, I'd like to recognize a great neighborhood that I live in, in the Fitzgerald sub-area. You've heard from some great people tonight, and not only from the Fitzgerald sub-area, you've heard from people from the city as a whole. So, we're fortunate to live in, I'm fortunate to live in the neighborhood, I do it in the city, I do. But I can't believe, and I hope you don't believe, many of the statements that have been made tonight, because many of them are not true. And I guess I could almost stop right there and say, and not say anymore, other than, these are the people, are the professionals that have the answers. I don't believe Ms. Agard is an attorney. Now, maybe she is, I'm not aware of that, but there are land use attorneys that can advise you very well on this matter, and you have one that- have one that was going to be here to speak to you, but apparently that's not going to work. Let me just... The compliance schedule was mentioned. The city attorney addressed the compliance schedule. We're compliant at this point. The question of ordinance 2163, there's been no development in that area. You're right, there hasn't been... Well, there's been one short plat, one, four, five-watt short plat. That's it. But we can show you dozens of purchase and sale agreements that have come to the property owners in this area that they have walked away. So don't say it hasn't been on the market. It has been on the market, and we've had a lot of interest, and absolutely not one purchase and sale agreement's been approved. Somebody talked about starting the clock. The clock has been running for 19 years. It's time for us to make a decision on this. Traffic on 35th. Traffic on 35th is there now. And this council talked a lot about when we took the protector, the Bothell connection off, we talked about moving that. And we talked, two or three meetings, I think, staff talked to us on all the alternatives. The cost would be considerably less. The regulations in this area, right here in the city, about 40 acres or so, are more restrictive than anywhere in the city, and I would say anywhere in the state. I've asked if there's any place else in the state that has 40%, 50% forest cover required, and I don't know of any. So much more that could be said. But I just hope you listen to your professionals. The staff, I guarantee you, has a lot more information than any of us. The appellant in this case are Anne Agard, Bobby and Judy Fisher, and Glenn Conley. None of them live in Fitzgerald Sub Area 1. So it would be nice to listen to the residents of the area who live there and what we're dealing with, so.
Stand up.
Sure. Those in favor of us, please stand up of the appeal moving forward. And I believe most of these people are residents of the city, and many of them are... Live in the Fitzgerald Sub Area.
Mr. Evans, could you wrap up, please?
Yes, I will. So in conclusion, thank you, counsel. I appreciate the time. I hope that you approve moving forward with the appeal. I think that's the right thing, and you are going to have much more ability to legislate land use in this area if this appeal has gone through and is heard. It's my impression, and that's what I've heard from your city attorney. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? There we go. Mr. Fisher.
I hope this works. Oh, yeah, it does. My name is Bob Fisher. I live at 23205 35th Avenue Southeast. I live in the Fitzgerald Sub Area, and I'm a part of the North Creek Fish and Wildlife Critical Habitat Protection Area. And this red arrow right here points right to my property. With the big blue blotch on it, somebody dumped a lot of wetland ink on our property. We moved to Bothell... My wife and I moved to Bothell four... Over 40 years ago, from an urban Seattle lot, a 50 by 100 lot, to raise our children in a quieter and a more relaxed place with more space to play and explore. We also came from the North Shore School District, go North Shore School. We picked a neighborhood with lot sizes from 1 to 5 acres and a quiet street. If you can believe it, 35th Avenue Southeast used to be a quiet street. It's not anymore. Over years, quite a lot has changed in our neighborhood. More people, more traffic, a lot more traffic, and some development. But after 40 years, it's surprising that, other than the traffic, the Fitzgerald neighborhood is in many ways similar to what it was 40 years ago. There are still many single-family houses on large lots and with forested property. And that kind of housing diversity is a good thing for Bothell. Not everyone wants to live in an R-5400 development with minimal yards and your neighbor 10 feet away from you. Along with space to play and explore, we were able to share with our children, and now our grandchildren, some amazing nature experiences. We've watched piliated and hairy woodpeckers, chickadees, winter ants, juncos, and flycatchers raise their young, nest and raise their young. We've watched coyote pups wrestle in a thicket of sallow. We've listened to owls calling at night, and we've picked apart castings to learn what those owls have been eating. We've pulled porcupine quills out of dog muzzles. We've made annual field trips down to North Creek to watch the sockeye salmon. We've even boiled the flesh off of a ripe mountain beaver carcass once to see what the skeleton looked like. I wouldn't recommend ever doing that. I'm never going to do it again myself, but it was interesting. And then for the last five years, we've watched a pair of Cooper's hawks raise their youngsters on a bare-stick nest about 50 feet up in a Douglas fir. Obviously, they like the neighborhood about as much as we do, or even better. This is a picture we took last July of a juvenile Cooper's hawk sitting on our deck railing, waiting for the parents to come down and give him a meal. Not a lot of kind... Not a lot of this kind of wildlife activity goes on in an R-5000, 5400 development. It's a treeless development usually, and it has maybe a 30-foot nature buffer somewhere along one side of the development. We do not want to see our lot developed into a high-density, treeless neighborhood. Bothell's a better place with a mix of housing densities that does allow for a diversity of birds, wildlife, and salmon, along with people. When we do leave this home, we'd like nothing better than to leave our land as a nature preserve for folks to enjoy, as we have over the years. And I don't have a copy of this presentation to put in the record, but I can give you the original for you to make a copy if you can.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Is there anybody else that would like to comment? We wore them out. Okay. All right. So the next part of the meeting is to open. AB 16007 is new business, considering dismissal of cause number 15-2-01577-7, Bothell versus the Growth Management Hearing Board. And we're going to open it up with the city attorney providing a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have a long presentation for you. I think you've heard my position on this and my presentation in the past with... In regards to this, I do want to address a couple of things that were said that I want to make sure clear on the record. But just to begin, my recommendation is the same as it was last week. I do recommend that council continue with the appeal. We are right at the finish line, really, as this sort of thing goes. We've done the majority of the work. We would be walking away from a considerable amount of money spent on this effort. It was an effort that was not taken lightly in... From a legal perspective, and it is an effort that, from a legal perspective, that is intended to protect the city's options and protect the city council's authority to legislate in this area. I wanted to note one thing. Several people, or at least one person, talked about my recommendation or my statements with regard to success in this appeal. While I do feel very strongly about the city's position in this appeal and the likelihood that the city will prevail, I want to make it very clear, no attorney can ever promise a win in a situation, in any situation. So I want to caution against anybody that thinks that I've guaranteed a win. I haven't. And I don't want that to come back to fly up in staff's face later on. I do think it's a strong case. I do think the city is in the right in this, with regard to the issue of the city making the decision. I'm not speaking to the underlying issue of whether the environmental protections were advisable, or what everybody would wish today, or whether development is adequately allowed for. I'm not speaking to any of those underlying issues. I'm speaking to... Only to the city's ability and right... Council's ability and right to make the decision. I feel strongly that the council has the right to make that decision and should retain that right to themselves. I also want to speak to the issue of best available science, and a statement was made several times that I had told council that we should have obtained best available science prior to going forward with the ordinance. In hindsight, we should have gotten... Done a best available science study in light of the tack that the Growth Management Hearings Board took. I think we could have avoided the appeal with a study, or we may have been able to avoid appeal. I don't... I guess I can't say that we would have, but we may have. It would have strengthened our case. But I'll be very clear, we were not required to do a best available science study under the law for this ordinance. Legally speaking, we were not required to do additional best available science studies over and above what the city already had and was already relying on. So anybody that quotes me as saying that we should have done additional best available science for... On a legal basis, or because we were legally required to do that, that's inaccurate. That is not what I intended to say. That's not what I think I said, and I wanted to clarify that for council. There were several statements made that the... You've been surprised with an argument, the argument that I made at the last council meeting. It's not my intent to surprise council. This is the first time that this issue of whether to drop the appeal has been heard by council, and it was my last chance to let you know what my legal opinion was, my first chance to let you know what my legal opinion was in that regard. And so I hope you did not feel surprised. It was not my intent to surprise you. It simply was the appropriate time to raise that issue in my mind. And then finally, I want to address the concern over if the city is successful on ordinance 2163 and whether it's upheld. The fact that the ordinance goes immediately is resurrected, and the fact that that will mean that development immediately vests to that ordinance. There are a number of things that are going to slow that process down, just so you know. The... Will have a fair amount of warning in that once the court makes a... Even if the court makes an oral decision at the hearing, it still has to be reduced to writing. You would have that lead time. The court very rarely makes an oral decision at the hearing on these types of things. It's a written decision that's issued after a week or sometimes a month of drafting by the judge in that situation. So there's some lead time built in there. There is also if somebody was to come in as soon as the decision was placed in writing, and somebody was to come in and request a permit and seek a development in that area. There's a pre-app process. There's pre-app engineering that must take place, and I spoke with planning staff today, and they can fill in on this if you have additional questions. But my understanding is that it's generally a two-to-three-month time period for that process to take place and to get to a completed application. So there's some additional time built in there if council is concerned about having time to act with regard to council's will going forward and reaching a compromised position or changing the ordinance in some way. Finally, there's... Staff has the ability to, if council requests, to come back with a menu of options for addressing concerns that council may still have about the ordinance. Among those options, and people living in the sub-area may not want to hear this, but among those options would be a moratorium. That is the nuclear option, I suppose, the council can take in any situation, but you would have that option as well. So there's a number of tools that staff can give you to address these issues without abdicating our position on the appeal and without moving... And without throwing away the effort that we've put into this so far. I may be a little biased, because I hate to see any legal effort go down the drain, but I truly do believe that it's the best thing for the city to preserve its options and to go forward with the appeal. I believe it would be in the best interest of the city. That being said, I'm here to serve the council and the city, and certainly will follow any direction that the council gives, and will do as council wishes, and I'm available to answer questions or facilitate the discussion in any way.
Do council members have questions for the city attorney? And then we'll get into discussion. Councilmember Spivey.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, so I want to make sure that it's clear in my mind, as well as everybody else's, that the appeal is not necessarily about the decision on 2163. It's how the methodology that they got to that decision. Is that a good way to put it? It's the reach and methodology that the GMA board used to reach that decision?
That is certainly my greatest concern, and I believe Peter Eglak would have said the same thing, and in some of the written counsel to the city, I think he's reiterated that. That would be my greatest concern from a legal standpoint. I believe that, you know, in defending the appeal to the Growth Management Hearings Board, we raised every issue that we thought was salient, and we have pursued every position that the city reasonably could take and has. So there are other issues involved, certainly with regard to the underlying ordinance and whether it was correct or not. But the greatest concern that I have, and the one that I am focused on, is the maintaining the city's ability to legislate going forward, and its autonomy.
Okay. Well, and that came out loud and clear for me in that my underst... And just, I think, in my question, it just, you know, that's the thing that's foremost in your mind, and also comes out quite strongly with me, is that we do have to protect that. So that's the one question I have for now. Reserve right to other questions as things move on.
Councilmember, I move that we extend the meeting till 10 o'clock.
I'll second it. We don't have the buttons working, so we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor of extending the meeting till 10 o'clock, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. We're extending till 10 o'clock. So is there any more questions from council members? And then we'll have a round of discussion, so you don't lose your opportunity for discussion. But do you have any more questions for the city attorney?
No, 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 no.
Okay. Who would like to open the discussion? Nobody.
Chair, just for some clarification, are we going through once? Is this questions or comments? What's the process?
What I was trying to do is to have the questions happen to ask the city attorney, and we've passed that part now. Now we're into discussion, and then obviously, once we have a motion, then we're deliberating. So no discussion? Okay. Councilmember Sandberg, thank you for being brave.
Not because I like to go first. It's because I can't wait for this stalemate to end. So I want to start with saying that I don't take this decision lightly, and I don't think anybody takes this decision lightly. I think everyone would agree that... I think everyone would agree that the pendulum that has swung in the Fitzgerald area has swung wildly back and forth, and it has landed in positions where we thought it was going to work. Back in 2008, we, the council felt, 2007, really the 2007 decision, council felt that it had reached a balance of environmental protections and development, and at the time, the residents thought that that was going to work. The proprietors thought that was going to work, and it turns out it hasn't. And so, that speaks to changing that underlying ordinance. However, as I've maintained, since I was on council through the, for the 2014 decision, I think that the changes that were made were drastic. Some characterize them as modest, and I can appreciate that that's your opinion, but my opinion is that the changes have been drastic. And so, we still have to go back to the table and work for a solution that is win-win for everybody, for both parties. And I think that's what we've lost. It wasn't win-win back when it was zoned, R1 unit per acre, and we thought it was a win-win when it moved to 5400A with environmental protections in the 39th connector, but that turned out to be a losing proposition. And now, the pendulum swinging back, I don't feel that it's a win-win situation, and I think we can work to that. And so, sorry for being disjointed, but I just want to go back and capture a couple of things that people have said. I thought, one person said that a decision to continue the appeal, or not continue the appeal, is not a win for either side. And so, it's also been stated, you know, why are you in such a rush? Well, I feel that the longer this legal process unfolds, the longer it takes us to get to a real resolution, because I don't support ordinance 2163. And so, we can wait for the courts to decide, or we can begin work. One of the speakers who spoke tonight spoke the previous week and said, what we need to do is get all the stakeholders around the table and agree, you know, to say what's important and agree to compromise. And that's not just horse trading of ideas that occurs. That has to occur in the context of best available science, which, what I heard last week was that all of us were in support of the best available science study. All of us are in support of getting updated information for this area to have that inform this process. So, another comment that was made was, you know, we should, we should just let the courts, let the court make the decision, which is kind of ironic, because this appeal is about whether the city and the city council should be able to legislate within its own borders. And so, why would we let a court make that decision? I mean, this is a legislative process. And so, I want to say that the argument has been made that the withdrawal of the appeal will make it more difficult to amend the 2008 regulations. More difficult. More difficult is not impossible. To change the 2008 regulations, I think we have to use real reasons, not just development isn't occurring. That's what the hearings board said. That's not a compelling reason. And so, we're, hopefully, we'll be basing it on updated best available science that is underway. Second of all, the city argues in its opening brief, and this is concerning for me, the city argues in its opening brief that because development has not occurred in zone one, it should have the broad discretion to make changes. I felt they were radical to the 2008 ordinance to achieve a better balance. What the city didn't acknowledge is that two major barriers to development were simultaneously removed from the 2008 ordinance. The removal of the 39th connector and the reduction and deletion of environmental protections. From a scientist's perspective, this is in effect changing two variables simultaneously in this land use experiments, which would confound any results. So, had the 39th connector been removed, and modest changes have been made, we might have gotten a better result in terms of development potential in that area. And had that happened, we would have never had the argument that balance needed to be So, I think, for me, it's important, it's important for us to get back to the table, because if we, if the city wins the appeal, I'm still going to oppose ordinance 2163. I don't want to have a nuclear option of having a moratorium, because my opinion, in being a part of this process for years, is that ordinance 2163 does not strike the right balance. So, if we win the appeal, I'm going to be here saying, we need to change things. If we lose the appeal, we're still going to have to change things. If we vacate the appeal, we're still going to have to change things. I mean, at least, that's my opinion. I'm only one voice here on council. And so, I think what's important is for us to get back to work, and I wish we had done that back in July of last year, because in July of last year, that's when council decided to move forward with the appeal. We could have been in this intervening six months, seven months, working on a solution, which I think we can achieve pretty easily, pretty quickly, if the parties are motivated to compromise. And I don't want to be saying in another six months. If we had just in January gone back to the table, we would have been so much farther along. So, I don't know, I don't see how our, I don't see how continuing with the appeal serves the area, because we still need to do the work of compromise. But I'm interested in hearing about, hearing what other council members think. I understand that there's this expectation that we want to have our day in court, but in the end, the council will, or could legislate again in this area, and the sooner we get to legislating in this area, the better.
Thank you. Councilmember Spivey, or Spivey, Councilmember Raym.
You can go first if you want to, Dale.
No, but we are both handsome. That's why you guys mixed up, yes.
Councilmember Sandberg said experiment. It's been an experiment, and the experiments failed. We've held these people for the past 20 years. They've had very little rights. We tried to make some changes in 2007 and 2008. They didn't work. We tried to make some changes recently, and they didn't work. I've heard from a number of individuals here tonight that said that we're going to lose this appeal, yet I don't think any of them were lawyers. In fact, a number of them were part of the party that is suing the city. I think the citizens have asked us to have their day in court, to just have their day in court, and they'd be happy with the decision. I hope everyone would be happy with the decision. Unfortunately, I think whoever loses will probably appeal that appeal. I think we need to continue with the appeal. We need to listen to our council. Whether we agree with the decision or not, the pretense is that the city should have the right to mandate what happens in the city, not the growth management board. So, I want the citizens to have their day in court. I think it's their right to have that day in court.
Who's the next brave soul? Councilmember Spivey.
Thank you, Mayor. Whether, as, when I asked the city attorney my question earlier, the, one of the big important parts of this is our right as a council, and future councils in other cities, to be able to legislate to our fullest ability. That is one of the big parts of this. And as elected officials, we should be fighting for that right. That right has been chipped away by this decision. We should be fighting for that right so that we can do the will of the people. And I agree with Councilmember Sandberg that we need, and Mayor Raym said this last week also, that we need to bring the parties together and find some middle ground. We can start that process now, and Councilmember Sandberg's correct, in that we did, as a council, agree, you know, nodding heads to move forward with the parametric study. We can move forward with finding that middle ground with all the parties right now. We don't have to wait for the parametric study. We can start having that conversation. We can have that conversation while this appeal goes through. But if we don't let this appeal go through, essentially, what's happening is, is we can't find that middle ground. That middle ground's been taken away from us. The Growth Management Act states that the critical areas ordinance is, that's the base. You can't go below the base. We voluntarily chose in the past to raise the bar, and then what they're saying is, oh, you raised the bar, you can't bring it back down. That's a new base. Well, that's taking away our ability to legislate. And if we can't, you know, if we voluntarily make it tougher, and it causes problems, as it has, we can't go back and find the middle ground, because they said that's the new, that's the new standard. And that's not right for anybody. That, and that, that will play out every time that we make environmental choices. We will never, we could, we could say, this is what we want. Well, you know, that's not working. For whatever reason, it's not working. Well, we won't be able to go back. That's why this appeal is so important, to help find the middle ground that Councilmember Sandberg and Mayor Raym want to get at, that I want to get at. I believe Councilmember Agnew, I think all of us want to get there. We're moving forward with parametrics. The only way we can move forward to middle ground is to let this appeal play out and preserve our right to get to middle ground. It's, you know, I've got all kinds of little, just words here to remind myself of talking points and all, but I think what it boils down to is, we want to right a wrong, but somebody took our ability to right the wrong away. That's why we got to move forward with the appeal. But that doesn't prevent us from having the conversation to right the wrong until we know where we stand in the long run. So, I encourage all of my council members up here for the, what I would say is a vast majority of the citizens, for two meetings in a row that have asked us to move forward with parametrics, as we have done, and to let the appeal play out. I encourage you all to support the majority of the people that have spoken two meetings in a row. I've heard, I've heard in the past that the people, you know, the people have spoken. Well, two meetings in a row, the people have spoken. I encourage you to listen to them and let this appeal move forward.
So, who's next? There are a couple remaining. I could go if that, okay.
I'm not in favor of keeping the appeal going. I don't agree with the statement that it shackles us. I think the problem was the process by which we made that decision. I have real sympathy for the landowners that have been held hostage for all these years, but my belief is that we can help them and come to a solution faster if we drop the appeal than if we continue with it. And my hope is that we're able to get all the parties together to work toward a solution with the parametric study to guide us, so we can make appropriate changes to the ordinance with science.
Okay. Want me to go?
Yep.
I'll jump in front of you. So, welcome to, is this year 20 of the Hunger Games? I don't know if you guys have all seen the popular series where there's many different zones. You are in zone one, and we are the capital. So, enjoy continuing to working for us and paying your taxes at the highest rate that you can, and giving us the money so that you can live under the restrictions that we put forward. And that's the side of reality of where we are today. You know, there were several comments made by the public regarding favorable development council that was before this, and I also appreciate some of the comments that were made, that actually 85% of the city of Bothell appreciates the direction the city of Bothell has been going in regards to the development in downtown. It's been a very positive, it's even higher than that, I'm being told, as I speak. We're all enjoying going into Six Oaks and McMinimans and the Beardsley Crossing, enjoying restaurants that some of us in this room actually voted against, and I've witnessed some of you eating in those establishments, which is excellent. Bothell's Downtown, Main Street's an exciting place to go. During the time that I've been on council, yes, I am a builder, yes, I am a developer. There was acquisition, obviously, in the last year, I was in the news a few different times. The truth is, several of the council members that are sitting up here sat in an executive session, and not one of those council members made a motion, made a decision to move forward to go purchase the Wayne Golf Course. About 45 days after that meeting, I and another 21 other developers were approached by the landowners, private landowners, in a transaction, and a group that I am a minority interest in actually was able to move forward and move on that. That is the truth. There was an independent investigation that showed that no wrongdoing was done. So, people can continue to make accusations that I've made something in the conflict of interest and financially benefited myself illegally. That is just a not accurate statement. A true statement would be, in regards to the environmentalism, I've actually done a lot over the last 10 years with the support of fellow council members, some of which are in the audience. One would be the Green PUD. I've actually developed the Green PUD. I've not just spoken about the environment, I've done it. We put in bioswales and grain gardens and ponds and pervious concrete. It's real green stuff that we've done. I'd love to see that still be able to move forward. I was on the council 10 years ago when the zoning was changed to this Nikachapa-type area, and our hope is that these environmental restrictions that were put in could be something that would be that compromised, to sit together and have the environment protected, but yet development move forward. The reality is, I was too aggressive in that zoning, and for that, I apologize. We did our best to make sure that development could still take place and the environment could still be protected. We reached too far. So, I've done it. The reality is, the council that was in place prior to me, three of those members are here today, is R96 zoning was put into place. It used to be R4. When that R96 zoning went play, went put into place, clear cutting happened, and it's still happening today under that zoning. We don't have the flexibility. I'm a strong, and, strong in favor of density credits of lot clustering that allows you to have creative land zoning, allows you to leave, for instance, Bentley, over 250,000 yards of dirt was taken off that hillside by the prior developer, Mike Reed. During that time, we saw all those trees stripped out, the hill dropped down. I don't know how many thousands of trucks of dirt were brought out of there. The reality is, Mike actually approached the council at that time, wanted to be able to density, have density brought down so he could keep the development at the bottom of the hill. They were told no. They had to do 9,600 square foot zoning. Actually, one of the council members at the time, Mr. Tim Tobin, made the comment that you can't raise a family on a lot smaller than 9,600 square feet, which is a horrid statement, because I think you can raise a family in a 500 square foot apartment and... Because I think you can raise a family in a 500-square-foot apartment or a 200-square-foot apartment. It's the who you are and the context of your character. If you love your kids, no matter your economic circumstance, you can provide for them. These are the statements that I take statement against. So that's why I supported a Green PUD. That's why I supported the underlying of the Fitzgerald area. And so the truth is, I want to be able to see this move forward because it's the right thing to do. I don't want to have you living in zone one in the Hunger Games. I want you to be able to be a part of the city. You're contributing your taxes to it. It is your private property. I always get a little bit offended when people come forward. Actually, I was reflecting, my heart sunk more, literally, when one of the speakers came forward, and then all the negative comments about me last year from that dais or in the other room. I, I wanted to stand up and walk up, when one of the speakers actually put up prices of land that were sold in your area and told you that, how you guys should be dealing with your own private property, absolutely insulting. So my hope is, this council will respect the humans and families that are sitting in this room, respect the private property rights that you, sitting in this very room, have. And so I will absolutely be voting against any motion that is put forward. And I still think councilmembers up here need to answer the question, why this is being pushed through so fast, when we're receiving emails from the appellant with her attorney CC'd on it, directing this council majority on how to act and how to proceed forward. I think those people who receive campaign contributions who are going to vote to turn down this appeal should answer the question why they think they should vote. That's my time.
Councilmember McNeil, you want to go? Or you want me to go? Okay. So I've spent the majority of this weekend trying to look at the history of this, this situation, and it's, it's a very, very in-depth. It's been fought in court three different times. There's a study, the parametric study, there's the, the current appeal, the Growth Management Hearing Board, there's the ruling of the Growth Management Hearing Board there. I mean, I've read everything. And I have basically been back and forth on which way to go on this. And, and it had, there is no influence from other people. People that are being mentioned, I wouldn't even talk to them, because I needed to figure this out for myself. I kept everybody at arm's distance. I did pull every attorney that I knew, outside of the, you know, people that are actually involved in this case. And I did also speak with our city attorney, of course, as well. So there's two parts to the appeal, and I want it to be, oh, actually, you know what? Yeah, let's do that first. There's two parts to the appeal. There's the first part where it goes, it's about 40 pages long, and it goes into a lot of detail about why 2163 is a good thing. And I was here on the council when that was passed, and I'm also a surface-water ecologist, as well as a stormwater planner for the, for a different city. And so I do have some, some technical savvy when it comes to what it means to have a ordinance 2163 versus what was there from a hydrologic standpoint, or if what the, what the stream is going to experience if the development occurs. And so the first part of the appeal, what it said was, you know, hey, all, all we did was we reduced the tree cover by 10%, and we just took out the effective impervious area, or the amount of hard surfaces, roofs, roads, that type of thing. We took the percentage maximum of that out of there. And we also took out the grading limitations, and we, we replaced it with the 2012 Stormwater Design Manual. Now, I have written stormwater design manuals, and I can tell you, the, the grading limits and the limit on effective impervious surface has never been in a stormwater man, management manual in Western Washington in the history of having stormwater management manuals in Western Washington. So I didn't support 2163 when it went through. It makes me appalled to think that it could be actually reinstated in place after the Growth Management Hearing Board ruled on it, that it was inconsistent with, with state law. So there's the first part. So the second part of 20, of the appeal basically said, you know, Growth Management Hearing Board didn't follow their rules. Just like when a, you know, police go into a crime scene and they, and they process the crime scene. Well, if they didn't do the right things, you know, that, that can be called out in court and say, hey, well, you know, they didn't use gloves, put their gloves on correctly when they grabbed the gun that killed the person, so the murderer gets off. And, you know, those are the, that's the portion of it that gave me a lot of pause, especially after hearing from the city attorney, that, oh, wait a second, what does this mean? So it means that we would lose our legislative authority. And so I went back and I read the Growth Management Hearing Board decision again. And what I found was that, you know, they didn't say, hey, we want to just rip the keys out of your hand and drive your car around. What they were trying to say was, you know, if you're going to change something that had best available science to back it up when you put it in place, you better have a good reason to do so, instead of just basically undermining it. And I wasn't there during the hearings or anything else, but I just know from professional experience that, you know, the ordinance 2163 really, it gutted the environmental protections. Everything went from shall to should, except for the tree retention piece, and they just reduced it 10%. So that's the appeal in a nutshell, from, from what I saw. But I want to take a step back from the environmental piece, because I think people get, and rightfully so, people say, you know, there's, humans come before fish. I hear that all the time. I do this professionally, and I totally agree with it. People always come before fish. I, I care very much about people, but at the same time, people also have to live here, and there's a quality of life issue. And if all of our streams are dead, then what kind of quality of life do we have? But the important, so I want to take, go, get away from the, the fish discussion. I want, I put this up on the projector because I found this in the parametrics report, and I found it very interesting. So for zone one, which seems to be the contentious part of the Nikuchapa area, on the left-hand side, and I don't know if you can, it's not extremely clear over there. On the left-hand side, that's 5,400A without the LID overlay. So in this area, we have this LID overlay, which adds, adds those environmental protections, basically, the impervious area limitation, the, the cut-and-fill limitation, as well as the forest retention requirement. So if you strip that away, you can get 45 units into a five-acre lot. That's what 2163 basically would do. I mean, I, this is, this analysis is based on specifically this area, and this was with the tree retention. So I don't know for sure how much of that area would actually be still in tree protection. But I think the, the way we did, the, we changed what is tree protection anyway. So I don't know for sure, but it would, but on the right-hand side, you can see with the LID overlay, there's 16 units. Now, it's important to note that this was all decided upon, and it made good sense when there was this road called the 39th Connector going through this area, where people can get in and out of this, of this neighborhood. And so you got to keep in mind, and when we took public testimony on 2163, there was a crowd about this size in the old council chambers, and maybe 10% of them talked about the environmental piece. Everybody was upset about the 39th Connector coming off because of the congestion in this area. So when I look at, saying, okay, well, I think 2163 is okay, or, or, or let's say, I, if I go to support the, the appeal, and the appeal is upheld, and we go back to 2163, you're going to have 45 houses instead of 16 in a five-acre lot. According to the parametric, according to the parametrics report. So, and there's no 39th Connector, so everybody's going to have to get in and out of this area on 35th. So the way I see it is that there's really two options. Option one is to drop the appeal, or, or lose the appeal. It's really the same option, same outcome. And what would happen is, we would go back to the 2008 regulation, put in, it would be put back in place, and we would move forward from there. The other option is if we win the appeal. And if we win the appeal, ordinance 2163 is then brought back. And the, and I, as, as my first month of being the mayor of the city council, I would be absolutely mortified if this council moved forward with a moratorium. But to be honest with you, the traffic impacts and the environmental impacts and not having the best available science information by February, what right would we have not to instate 2163 and then projects get vested to it? So I don't want this to be, and I just want something else to be known. I've known the Berry's, I've known their daughter, I've known her well for 20 years. I know Kai Nelson is, is her husband. And so to, to, to kind of look at me and be like, oh, he just cares about the environmentalists. I care deeply about this situation. It's, it's personal to me as well. Because I know people in your neighborhood, I've been there, I've met your neighbors, I understand what's going on there. I understand that you have a really bad situation. But I can tell you that, you know, there's three different iterations of this has happened, and we're about ready to embark on the fourth one. And so to me personally, I want to get moving on trying to make something work out here. And I don't think it's the right move to sit there and fight this in court and try not to find a solution that is balanced, that addresses the transportation issues, and supports the environment. So that's my testimony.
Can you just clarify your example? Did you say the one on the left is 2163?
The one on the left is, so this was out of the parametrics report, and so the one on the left is 5,400A without the LID overlay? The one on the right is the same five-acre lot with 5,400A with the LID overlay?
I thought you said the one on the left is what 2163 is.
2163, the only thing that would be left is the forest retention, which isn't really forest.
But so for clarity, is this 2163 on the left, or is it not?
It is not. This is out of a 2008 study, so 2163 was even, wasn't even heard of then. This is, this is all I had, this is all I have to go off of, because I don't have a study to tell me what it would, what would happen out there, other than what, what was given to us in 2008.
Okay. I appreciate that. Yeah, I guess definitely 2163 would not be the one that's on the left, per my understanding. So that would be very important to know, I guess.
Right. Yeah, wouldn't it?
Well, well, we do know, but that's not an accurate picture. So I just wanted to know.
So we have one more councilmember that has an opportunity to speak with. Do you want to speak?
Excuse me, I'm going to keep mine very brief. Bothell's near and dear to me. I've been in this area a very long time, and I've heard a lot of the passionate testimony that's come out tonight. And I want to thank the residents of zone one for hosting us this past Saturday. Getting that information was very important for us to understand. Regardless of whatever decision is made tonight, a decision has to be made on whether we move forward or not. And there's going to be two sides to this. But I think what's important to understand is, we've seen this in our community before, where we have two sides to an issue. I think what I would like to see is us come together as a community and work together to find a resolution, whichever way we go. But if, by continuing to divide our city by this issue or that issue, who's on this side, who's on that side, who took money from this person, who took money from that person, I don't think that gets us anywhere. I think where we can be united is by working together for the common good of Bothell for the future. We always talk about what we want to see our, our future looking like in Bothell. I, you know, I, I walked this entire community when I campaigned. Whether I took money from this person or that person, doesn't matter. What I did was, I met a lot of people that cared about Bothell when I went out and knocked on the doors. And the most important thing for me when I'm sitting up here is that I represent every single community resident, not only the ones that voted for me, but the ones that did not vote for me, with a conscience that I'm making the best decision that I possibly can for all of you. And so I just wanted to get that out, that it, it's important to me that you guys know, that I'm voting based on the heart on what I think is the best for our community, because I am raising my family here as well. So thank you.
All right, all councilmembers have had an opportunity to speak. Do we want to do a lightning round, as it was called last week? I think we're, we beat this thing up pretty good. Councilmember Sandberg, do you have a motion?
Well, the other motion that we can do is to continue this to next week. Because people have, one of the frustrations I've heard is that we're moving too quickly, that we need to hear from the attorney who is preparing the, the opening brief and is defending the city. So I think we've heard a lot of testimony tonight that maybe some councilmembers would like to digest more and think about it. What, what strikes me is that there's, there's two, there's two streams of thought here. One is, we need the appeal to move forward and compromise. The other one is, we need to vacate the appeal to move forward and compromise. And I think that's kind of interesting, that those two concepts coexist the way they do. And so maybe that's, you know, I'm, I'm just offering a path forward. Again, you know, this is, this is a very complicated process, and I don't think that the process is harmed by continuing our public hearing till, until next week, because I, I believe that's when Eglak returns from his vacation and is able to talk. And even though it seems painful to come to public hearings and spend your night here versus watching your favorite program, I, you know, it's, I think it's still great public process, regardless of what side you're on. So I'm going out that, that, there as a, as one option path forward, and I'm, I'm getting some stink eye.
So we're doing the lightning round, unless we hear a motion. Councilmembers, Spabey.
Just, I, I just, it's, and it's, I don't want to be nitpicky, but a public hearing means one thing, and having this public discussion means another. And I want to make sure that we're having this public discussion and that we're not into a public hearing, because that's a whole different set of noticing and everything else. And, and so it's important that we use the right terminology so that the public doesn't have a misunderstanding as to what's going on. So.
We, we are having a public meeting, not a public hearing.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, I just, like I said, it's just, I, I don't want any type of misconception from the public to muddy the waters anymore. So I, I make a motion that we continue this and, to next week, so that we can meet with our legal representation on this appeal matter.
I second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion?
I, I, I think that when you, when you hire an attorney, you have to be able to at least listen to them and, and ask them questions, and, and get background and everything else. And moving forward without listening to our, our attorney, it, it just, it's not doing our due diligence. It really isn't. It's not, it's not representing the people properly. It's, it's, it's the right thing to do, it's our obligation to do. So I, 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 I think this is the right thing, is to, to have this discussion, again, especially after we meet with our, our attorney on this. And we may have to meet with him in executive session and then come out, or we have this discussion out front, then meet with him in executive session. I, I don't know. That'll be for the city attorney and our, and our attorney on this case to lay the ground rules for that. So, but I think it's important that we meet with our attorney and hear from him, so that we're getting it from the horse's mouth, if you will. So that's why I'm supporting it.
Councilmember Freed. Great, thank you. And I'll be supporting this motion, because I do think it's right to hear from our legal counsel that we've hired and invested in as a city.
Councilmember Sandberg. Councilmember Sandberg.
And I'm going to be supporting the motion. I, I feel like I've heard from the attorney, because we've read tens, if not over 100 pages of his position. However, I do defer to what the public has said, and, and they feel that this is important, and so, and other councilmembers feel that's important. So I'm, I'm, I'm willing to, to have that conversation occur. So I, I'll support the motion.
Any more discussion on the motion? All right, so we're going to voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? One aye, one nay, or, did you? Aye, okay. So the motion passes seven, or six to one, with councilmember Dewar in the negative? Councilmember? There's the motion.
So.
There's a motion on the floor. Hold on a second. Is there a second?
Was there another motion?
There's a motion adjourned.
A motion adjourned.
Oh.
We didn't have any other items scheduled on tonight's agenda, and we didn't schedule anything else to discuss.
I just, I wanted to say that since we're moving this to next week, next week's agenda is super full, not, not next week, I'm sorry, the, not, not next, yes, next week, the 19th, not tomorrow, is super full because of our joint meeting tomorrow night with the North End Cities. So if there needs to be adjustments to make room for this, I hope we can do that. I hope staff can do that.
Mayor, that's what I wanted to ask council, if you want, recognizing that next week's agenda is quite full, I don't have the projected agenda in front of me, if council has a desire to start early or simply finish late? Not that those are only your two options, but to the extent that we keep everything on the agenda that's on your projected agenda, you're going to be finishing late.
Mayor Freed, can you roll back your motion? Are you willing to do that?
No, there was no second, so there's not a lot.
Oh, died, okay. Sorry, I was just trying to follow the. Start early or finish late? That's what our options are?
Well, if we're, if you want to complete all the matters on the projected agenda, I think the only outcome, if you start at six, is to finish in a later hour, most likely beyond 10.
Okay. Councilmembers, baby?
Along with the city manager's suggestion of start early or finish late, is I would encourage my council members, my fellow council members, to look at the agenda early, and maybe we can move additional things to consent and take care of additional items on consent to free up some time also. Just a suggestion.
Does anybody have an opinion on starting early? I can't really, I mean, I can try to make it happen if I need to, but I'd rather stay late.
Stay late because it's consistent for the public.
All right, everybody bring their sleeping bags next week. So, so we'll start at six, and we'll hear this next week, and then we'll look into potentially moving things to consent. I guess, council members, if you have an opinion about that, please send them to the city manager. If there's something that you think could go to consent, and I guess, I guess we'll go from there.
So is the, is our attorney going to come speak to us at that meeting, or are we going to have communication beforehand?
Your attorney?
Prior, prior to his vacation, I had communication with him, and he indicated that he would, would and could be here on the 19th if council would wait to make the decision until that time. So I'm expecting that he will be present at the meeting on the 19th.
So that's a no then? No communication prior to then from, I mean, we already got a memo from the man as brief, so.
I think you have as much communication as, you know, we, we tried to do, we didn't want to leave any, any thing on, any stone unturned, so we provided you as much by way of written communication as I think is reasonable. So I think from here on out, he'll be speaking to you verbally.
Okay. Have the attorney motion adjourned?
So moved.
Everybody's ready? Oh, wait, no, I can't make the motion. Somebody has to make the motion.
So moved.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Weird adjourned?